...of the year. We have a busy agenda, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kokoviac?
Present. First, on the conference agenda, we are recognizing a great community event, donation by the West Orange Chapter of Unico National, of radios to the volunteer West Orange Community Emergency Response Team. There's a little bit of a backstory to that, but we'll go over to the lecture and invite everybody up from the Fire Department, from CERT, and from Unico, and we'll get the show on the road. See how many people can get back here, and then we'll just sort of fold around. Okay, we're gonna take the pictures after, unless you want to take it now, so people can sit down. You want to take pictures now? Okay.
Mary has to be in the picture.
Can you fit everybody in?
Alan, Mary has to be in the picture.
Yes, tall people in the back.
Okay. Wait, Susan, let's, Mary, get in the picture. Mary, she needs one.
She'll take it.
So, thank you, everybody. There's a long backstory to this. I'm gonna let the folks up here explain it a little bit further, but CERT is a very important, all-volunteer organization here in town that helps us, helps the entire town to prepare for emergencies, disasters, and they also help the police and fire whenever they can. And I guess a couple of months ago, Ken Steele, who's the longtime president of CERT, gave me a phone call, and we sat down, and he talked about how it would really help them if they could get an improvement in their communications. And as you can see up here, that's what Unico has done. I put Mr. Steele in touch with some of the folks at Unico. My wife recently became a member over there, so I'm pretty close to them, and they just took it away. So, I just want to read the citation, and then we can get the guys up here to really fill you in on what's going on. So, this is a citation from the West Orange Township. "Is proud to recognize the Community Emergency Response Team and Unico. Whereas the Community Emergency Response Team of West Orange, known as CERT, is a volunteer group of residents serving the township during an emergency or disaster, as well as other times when they are needed in support of fire and police department activities. And whereas CERT promotes disaster preparation and readiness before disaster strikes, so the West Orange residents are better equipped to deal with the challenges an emergency or disaster brings. And whereas CERT members collectively volunteer hundreds of hours annually to help West Orange residents. And whereas CERT has a need for additional communications capabilities to better serve West Orange residents. And whereas the West Orange, excuse me, the Orange, West Orange Chapter of Unico National is a service organization helping the West Orange community for more than 50 years. And whereas Unico National's objectives are to promote and enhance the image of Italian-Americans, for members to be of service to the community, to promote Italian heritage and culture, to promote, support, and assist charitable, scientific, cultural, educational, and literary projects, to promote members' interests in public welfare, and to cooperate with others in civic, social, and cultural development. And whereas the Orange, West Orange Chapter contributes thousands of dollars annually to scholarships, as well as community groups and projects. And whereas Unico Chapter learned of CERT's need for improved communications and decided it was a worthy cause to support. And whereas Unico Chapter purchased 15 two-way radio devices for CERT as requested, which will greatly improve its ability to serve the West Orange community. Now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the entire community, the West Orange Township Council recognizes and thanks both Unico Chapter for its additional donation to our community, as well as CERT for its ongoing efforts to improve its contribution to our safety." Thank you very much. So, I'd like some of the guys who really know the backstory in this to come up and just say a few words. And I'd like to start with the Fire Department, since if my house ever catches on fire, I don't want any bad feelings in anywhere in the Fire Department.
Thank you. I just want to first start by thanking Unico of the Orange and West Orange Chapter, President Frank Palocchio, and incoming President Ken Broderick. This sort of materialized just the right time. The CERT team always needs support, particularly in membership, so please come out and join West Orange CERT. We can always use your help. These are members of this community that are there to help with preparedness and help on the big-scale events, particularly one that's coming up. That's why this is so timely right now, and we really appreciate this donation. The Vietnam Wall is coming, the Memorial Wall is coming to our town this weekend, from the first to the fourth, and it is gonna greatly improve our communications and our means to, you know, just keep the event safe and help augment the uniform services there. So, again, thank you so much for this very timely, very generous donation, and we look forward to helping out the community and, you know, being there and sharing that same spirit of volunteerism with you. Thank you.
Ken Steele, the president of CERT, couldn't be here. He said something about a 44th wedding anniversary, so he had to flip a coin. But Matt Dragon, who's the vice president of CERT, I wanted him to come up and just say a few words. Matt, if you wouldn't.
So, I wanted to thank Unico also, and obviously Ken not being here, he wants to make sure I thank Unico several times while I'm up here. So, the Community Emergency Response Team, we help out in town, as Abder said. We do preparedness presentations before disasters, so if you're interested in finding out more about that, we can speak to your group, your PTA, your group like a Unico group, and then we also help out during town events and during emergencies. So, we have a website, westorangecert.org. We're on Twitter, Facebook. Reach out to us if you're interested in volunteering, or if you're interested in having us come out and give a presentation. And thank you to the Town Council for having us, and to Unico, again, for the radios, and obviously to the Fire Department and the Department of Emergency Management for supporting our team and facilitating our work in the township. So, thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, we have, I guess, the outgoing and incoming presidents of Unico here. I don't know if you guys have fought over who you're gonna, okay, Ken, please. Mr. Broderick, please.
Thank you, and good evening. Joe, in that certificate he gave us, talked all about the things that Unico does. One of the things that is not talked about there, our scholarships is something very big, but the special projects portion of the money we raise and kind of squirrel away every year. In the past year and a half, and thanks to the council people, Jerry and Sue, I was listening to a council meeting, I may not come here, but I do listen, and there was a project at the Thomas Edison Museum. We got involved, there's a pocket park now across the street where eventually Thomas Edison will be sitting there, and, you know, in my old age, a long time from now, I'll be sitting there with him. But the wall outside, the municipal sign was put up by us years ago, the garden for the exceptional child next to the cat center, those are all special project monies that we come in and take. And when this came up, you know, for us, truly, my board just went around the room, and that wasn't the number of radios they wanted. I think it was either 10 or 12, and they said, "Let's make it 15." And, you know, we raise money, these people work very hard at our events to raise money, and we just give it away. And that's what we're all about. We love this town, we've been here forever, and thank you.
Get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that. Actually, why don't we get this to you?
Thank you.
I gotta get another picture? Is anybody? Mary, I'm sure you'll want to take that.
I'm still not so sure August is it, but they are starting to market them right now.
Correct.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I saw some, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
No, no, go ahead, I just.
I was just gonna say, I just noticed some very large signs, a couple of large signs that are hanging from the building under construction now. One is to, one is, I guess we're soliciting for occupants or lessors for the office, not the office space, the retail space in front, and then also for renters.
Yeah, I've had some, I've had some local businesses who've called me about looking at that retail space.
Councilwoman.
The brick facade, it seemed like they started and they stopped. Are there any issues with it?
No, not as far as I know.
Okay.
I mean, I think they just do things in phases.
Yeah, crunchy.
Yeah, I think they're moving.
It's all staging.
Yeah.
It's all staging.
It's all staged. But I, they're moving along very well.
Do we know if that lot, or could you find out, because probably don't know, are they gonna have a charging station in there? Montclair has in their parking lot for the electric cars, like to charge.
I'm not sure, I can find that out though.
A lot of the lots are starting to have them now.
Yeah, I can check that out.
Just curious.
I'll check it out.
Thank you.
Just to that point, there are four directly across the street at the Thomas Edison.
Oh, there you go.
BMW put those in just last month.
That are free up until January.
I hear you.
Just a quick question, do you know if the shuttle is still part of the planning process?
I have not talked to them about that. It was originally, and I'm still not sure unless you know the answer.
I do. It, sure, it was not a condition of their application, but it was certainly part of the discussion. And they agreed that, because it was so highly recommended, that if the demand was there, then they would implement it, a shuttle. Just like we did at the, yeah, just how many commuters are there, the requests. They could even tell, especially with the marketing going on now, if people are looking to rent and they're looking for that service, then they'll know just by people looking to rent the space.
I hope the demand is high.
I would imagine.
So, I guess that would help with the marketing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
He answered my question about the marketing thing, so.
By the way, I did speak to the gentleman, and I need some dates from you.
I'm sorry?
I need some dates from you if you want to go down there and walk the building.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I spoke with the onsite manager.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers, much appreciated.
We all do.
Yeah, we all want to.
No, well, whenever, just let me know.
Road trip.
Road trip. Wear your hard hats.
Maybe before July 11th, July 11th meeting, we can walk.
Go there anytime you want. I mean, Councilman Drino had called me the other day, and I set up, I talked to the onsite manager, and he said, just give me the date, you want to come down, and we'll do it.
You guys okay, maybe half hour before the meeting?
Sure.
Well, the day of, just prior to the meeting.
Yeah, so that we can go the same day.
I'll give you some dates, Mrs. Sayers, thank you.
Whatever your dates are, just let me know.
I like that idea, Councilman, us all going together if we can. I don't know if that potentially violates.
They're not gonna be there at 5:30, though. You're gonna have to go during the day to get there, because they usually shut down around 5:30. So, you either gotta get there before 5:30, or you're not gonna get there after 5:30.
So, you can get there at 5:00?
You just let me know what day you want, and give me a call, and I'll set it up. Just make sure that we have the bodies there to go there. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Council liaison announcements? Who'd like to go? Councilwoman?
I could start. Quiet, our next PR Commission meeting is next month, but obviously, everybody knows about, or I hope everyone knows by now about the upcoming Fourth of July events. July 1st at 9:00 AM is the opening ceremony for the Vietnam Memorial Wall. And July 2nd, we have the All Day Food Truck Festival up at West Orange High School. And July 4th, of course, we have the last day of the wall memorial that will be on the foot, so the wall memorial will be on the football field. I believe the food truck festival is gonna be up on Pleasant Valley Way, because the wall memorial is a solemn experience, and then they're gonna have the festival not too far away. But it should be a great couple days here in West Orange. We hope all of you could come out. You could sign up to volunteer. There's still places where you could volunteer to work for the wall by going on to the township website and clicking on. There's a little time slot, so if you could fill that up, that would be great. And our races are at 6 o'clock on the 4th, get all the little kiddies out, and even the big kids come out, and maybe partake in the sack race. I did that once, and that was once, so, and then to do well with that race. But it's a good time, great day, a lot of festivities and fanfare, and all will be enjoyed by all. And hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us next couple, next week. Also, quiet with my other projects, other than our West Orange Senior Citizen Project. We had that discussion last meeting about the survey. Unfortunately, Montclair State, some of their personnel went on vacation, so they kind of pushed us back a little bit. We're meeting with them this week. They're gonna have a draft of the survey for us. Right now, it's pretty extensive from, you know, what the director had told me, so we're gonna look at it, make sure it's manageable. You know, we'll need to be tweaked, because we want to encourage residents to not have any issues taking the survey, because we want to have as many residents take the survey as possible. And so I look forward to reviewing that draft with the committee. They're going to be giving it to a few citizens, residents, to see how long it will take them and whatnot. And hopefully, within a week or so, we'll have some information on the dates for the training, the dates on the training that will be training residents and our staff. So if you haven't heard, if you put in your name to sign up, the director hasn't contacted anyone yet, but she will be hopefully within the next week or so. They had to obviously get dates from our staff, and when they'd be available for the training, coordinate with them first, because we absolutely need them to be trained. And then they'll be contacting our residents as well. Okay, so a lot of great things next couple weeks. And just last, congratulations to the Board of Education and the high school for beautiful high school ceremony, first time at West Orange High School outside, I believe. Maybe in 1962, I saw somewhere online, they might have had a ceremony there, but up until then, it's always been at South Mountain Arena. And they did a phenomenal job. The day went off flawlessly, and I thank, you know, to all our staff as well, who was out there directing traffic and whatnot. They didn't have any issues, and the weather cooperated, so kudos off to them. Council President.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Again, I just, coupled with, with Councilwoman Castellino said, and to congratulate our class of West Orange High School of 2017. We're so very proud of all of you, and we wish you the best in your lives, both professionally and personally, and always be proud and remember, West Orange is your home. Coming up on July 13th at 7:30 PM, Thursday night, is our next West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Will be held at Turtleback Zoo in the Education Center. Please come if you'd like to see what we're doing with our paint striping project down on Main Street, our road diet. Some really interesting projects are coming along, also with the mid-block crosswalk at Edison School. So you'll see all these things, the pictures, the plans, everything's being laid out for the first segment, which will be Main Street. And thank you to the county for its total cooperation and working with us on our complete streets and our road diet. Also, two coming up, as we had last year, will be Downtown Thursdays. The dates and times and the places will be announced very shortly. Thanks with the Downtown West Orange Alliance. And we also had a tremendous street fair. I hope everybody came out and had a great time, and I hope you plan on coming next year. Also, going back to what was brought up at last council meeting about the situations at Rent a House, I've put together pictures from the tenants and from the pictures I've taken when I walked around. I presented them to Marzulli, and there'll be hopefully a planned walkthrough and to go over what needs to be done, so the tenants and the residents will see that things will be addressed to their issues, particularly with their concerns for safety, conditions on the floor, conditions on mold, and also progress statement of the installation of the new windows. Also, too, just want to call out that also volunteers are still needed on July 4th for the Traveling Vietnam War Memorial Wall. So if you'd like to spend an hour or so in supporting the memory of our Vietnam veterans and to honor them, just contact Shari Quirk in the mayor's office, and she'd love to hear from you. All you need is an hour or two to come and help, especially on July 4th. That's the day where we really need to have that done. And other than that, also, Councilwoman Cirillo, would you like to mention Latin Night, how successful it was? You can. Okay, thank you, Council President.
And without any further ado, Councilwoman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to thank not only the sponsors for the generosity. We had a number of sponsors that were very helpful. We put together an ad book, an event journal. We had a lot of participation. Thank you for your donation. Also, I want to thank the New Jersey Arts Interventer for providing their staffing, the township for the security and safety, and OSPAC, the Oscar Shillman Performing Arts Center, which is a beauty, especially in a beautiful afternoon like Saturday. It's just gorgeous. Beautiful family, a family-friendly site. So thank you all that participated, supported, and was there to just spend a really good time. So on behalf of the Hispanic Foundation, I just want to extend that gratitude. In addition to that, I, the Public Library had their kickoff yesterday, so just go to the Public Library. I always, for years, like, been a big advocate of the programming of our Public Library. Check out their calendar, WestOrange, W-O-P-L dot org. In addition to that, and maybe Tammy can talk a little bit about that later, the Oscar Shillman Performing Arts Center calendar is out. The next event is Saturday, July 22nd, and she will tell you a little bit more about the offerings this summer, so if you didn't get a chance to visit the facility on Saturday, you can, you have many opportunities to do so later on this summer. So with that said, thank you for the time, Council President.
Councilwoman.
It's more similar, that if you haven't visited West Orange Arts Gallery and Gift Shop at 551 Valley Road, I invite you there. They have plenty of workshops going on, all different types of workshops for art-related training. And they presently have a local artist exhibition, which is something fairly new. Usually, it's the people that are on the board, and now they've extended it, and they're creating a coloring book, a West Orange coloring book. So please go to W-O-Arts.org, see how you can participate, take a photo, submit the photo, and they're going to create a coloring book to, for residents to purchase and color. And it'll be a fundraiser in October. So please visit W-O-Arts.org to get some more information. I would like to extend an invitation again to the Friends of Edison, the annual Glenmont Garage summertime tune-up. This will be at the Glenmont Estate, Edison's Glenmont Estate in Llewellyn Park, at the Edison Garage. We are conserving the first electric charging station there. That's where the funds go to. Tickets are $40. Members of Friends of Edison, membership fee is, or ticket is $30. And you can go to F-O-Eddison.org, FriendsofEdison.org, to purchase tickets or to become a member and find out more information about this event. We have local restaurants participating. The Poorhouse always provides their signature cocktail, the Electric Spark, the Benji's, Mexican Grill, Oak Barrel, Sam's Place, and the Wilshire Grand. So it's Thursday, July 13th, 5:00 to 7:30 at the Edison Glenmont Garage. Everyone's invited. Tomorrow night, we have the West Orange Environmental Commission meeting. I mentioned at our last meeting that we have a New Jersey Clean Energy Program that we're introducing. And just today, municipal survey was taken for the municipal buildings. As we gather more information, we'll see how much money we can save through the New Jersey Energy, Clean Energy Program. And I think any minute now, we will launch the landing page for the Energy Sage Solar Program that was introduced here last month, I believe it was. That will be a site where you can go to, it will be on the township website, where you can review, put information about your home, and see how much money you can save going through solar installation. So that's called Energy Sage, the Solar Program. Soon as that landing page is created, we will send information out about that. I, too, would like to congratulate the West Orange High School class of 2007. Many of my first mountain preschool graduates were in that class, so it's a beautiful ceremony. Thank you.
Just to briefly add, you may recall that back on Earth Day, April 22nd, a bunch of people, well over 100 people, went up to some open space on Mount Pleasant Avenue across from the recycling center, it's affectionately known as The Rock, and planted hundreds of tree seedlings to try to change the reputation of the open space up there. And I just wanted to send out a request to anyone who wants to help water the seedlings, so that they stay alive during the summer months. If you'd like to help, if you could just send an email to council@westorange.org, or call the mayor's office and just leave your name and phone number. We greatly appreciate it. We're going up there. I guess every, depending on the weather.
The waters up there.
Depending on the weather, when it gets dry, go up there and spend a couple hours and water the trees.
They're doing really well, okay, yeah, that part, they're doing very well. 500 trees were planted, so they're doing very well.
Any, anybody else?
I do have one question.
You always have one.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, thank you, Council President, my colleagues. It's for Mr. Sayers, or it can help me. Mr. Sayers, any status update on the repaving of the roads that were torn up with the new installation of the power gridlines from Prospect down to Forest Hill?
Starting today.
Me, too.
Actually, they were out there this afternoon, and they were out there yesterday, so I'm not sure when the pavings could start. They are milling the road.
Okay, thank you.
Starting today.
Thank you.
Yeah, they did some, I thought they were gonna start last week. They did some preliminary work up there close to Essex Green.
Yeah, I saw, because just residents are asking me and calling for an idea.
Actually, I have a meeting with PSEG tomorrow morning, so I'll, I'll mail it back.
Okay, thank you, Sayers.
If you could just, if you could just send the council an email when you guys decided on it, that'd be great, so we can start letting people know. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Just for the residents' sake, the road is closing in the evenings, so that's Prospect Avenue. Is it up to, between Northfield Avenue or Mount Pleasant Avenue as of now, correct?
Yes.
So I know that for sure, because last night, my sister got lost. She came to pick up the dogs. She got lost, she couldn't get through, she had to get back to Wayne, and she couldn't get through Prospect. So, you know, if you're out in the order, just make sure you keep an eye out on that calendar. There's signs all over the road as it relates to how long that work is going to go on. But as of this week, the road is being closed in the evening, so there's no access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on your six acres at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue, which is the gardens that are being created up there. There was a grant submitted just yesterday, got in just at the deadline, from the New Jersey Tree Foundation. So my husband, Joe, happens to be the Chair of Open Space, was working on that with John Lindson and Nixalisi to put together, and of course, our grant writers, to put together that $10,000 grant for pollinator gardens, rain gardens. There are eight different, there's a conceptual plan for eight different gardens on those six acres, then an outdoor classroom.
And are you guaranteeing a win?
You can't do that, but I wish.
Councilwoman.
Is the water coming from the house that used to be there?
No, there was, there was water up there already. It's a fire hydrant.
It's already, yeah, the water pipes are, yeah.
No, that was demolished.
That concludes our conference agenda, so we'll start our public meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28th, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8th, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilwoman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kokovia?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
First on the agenda is public comment. If you'd like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. What we try to do to speed things up is to recognize multiple people. If I recognize you, could you please come down to the first or second row, and we'll just speed up the time in between speakers. When you come to the, when you're recognized and come to the lectern, please start out by giving your name and spelling it, and also giving your address, so, for our, for the minutes of the meeting. Please, would anyone like to speak? I can see Ms. Morelli really wants to speak. Would you like to do a second?
Do you want to come up first?
Please. And gentlemen in the back, please come on down. Thank you.
Evening, Susan Anderson, Public Information Officer. I just wanted to remind the public, as Ms. Castellino has, that this weekend kicks off our Fourth of July Weekend Celebration. It's packed full of activities, starting on Friday, June 30th. The Traveling Vietnam Memorial will be rolling into town. It is a beautiful memorial, an actual three-fifths replica of the actual Vietnam Memorial that stands in Washington, DC. And we're really excited. It's being brought in via motorcade. There'll be veteran organizations and law enforcement, fire, and individuals on motorcycles, vets, family members, just members of the public who will be escorting this wall all the way from the south, down the turnpike, up the Garden State to exit 7 at 2:80, where we expect that the wall will arrive approximately 10:30 in the morning?
10:30, 11.
10:30, 11 o'clock, so anyone wishing to greet the mall, sorry, greet the wall, that is the time that we're expecting. Then the wall will be taken over to the high school. 7:01 is our opening service on Saturday at 9:00 AM. It is open to the public. It is, you know, stands to be a very, very beautiful ceremony, and we're, we invite the public, and we hope that you will be able to attend. We have six Vietnam veterans, of whom died in the Vietnam conflict, most of them who have streets named for them, so please come and help us honor them. And then the rest of the weekend is the usual fun activities. 7:02 is the Food Truck Festival, and we kick off July, usual July 4th festivities. And we also will be closing the wall with a ceremony from 2:00 to 3:00 PM on the 4th. So come by. Everything takes place at the high school Seriano Stadium, and we hope to see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Morelli, please.
Rosary Morelli Ralph Road. I'm not really here to speak on my own. I'm here, I think, at the last meeting. I spoke about when Madeline Narduzzi was here, one of the co-coordinators of the Teen Techy Program. And at that point, Megan White wasn't able to be here, so she's here tonight. Again, these are two phenomenal young people. And I forgot to mention, they were just recently inducted into the National Honor Society. So we got some really, really good people in this town, as well as those that participated in the Real Life for Life. Great kids. Megan.
Megan White, M-E-G-H-A-N-W-H-I-T-E, 12 Lincoln Terrace. So today, I'm here to talk about the new senior mentor program at West Orange High School. This all started with Mr. Stefan Zekala's Mountaineer Mentor Program, which consists of juniors and seniors interacting with the outside community to help out. So we helped in many things, such as Real Life for Life and the Walk for an Akil. But this past year, we decided to expand to the senior citizen community. So we've held two events so far in May and June, in which we invited seniors to our library for help with their technology. So they brought their iPads, iPhones, tablets, and we had a really great time just interacting. And it's more about, it's not just about technology, it's about the interaction between the age groups. And we look forward to expanding this a lot. We have given them surveys, asking what else they would like to see. We also did some chair yoga, which was really fun to do. And this upcoming school year, we're going to expand the program even more, to do more with them, and it's gonna be just really great. And I think that the Mountaineer Mentor Program is just something that has been really helpful to me personally. I know that growing up, I was never great at talking to adults or to parents or anything, but this program has forced me to do it, and I think it's a great thing, because it's important to mature, to go outside of the box and try to learn more and interact with more people than you wouldn't normally. So I hope that this program does really well and lasts for a really long time, so thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Please come on up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Hi, Ken Alper, A-L-P-E-R, 45, Collum Road Terrace. School being over, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone who was so helpful in getting our bus lane and kiss-and-go improvements accomplished at Gregory School for this past year. Council members, Jack Sayers, Mayor Parisi, and Lenny Lepore, and of course, our Gregory staff, who kept things running so smoothly, Lisa Asman, Danielle Moreno, Carolyn Wells, Amy Miller, and of course, Michelle Thompson. Y'all made it possible for us to solve our longstanding parking problems, significantly improve traffic flow through the entire area, and most importantly, dramatically improve our student pedestrian safety as part of our march towards safe routes to schools. We estimated we had 100 cars a day come through the kiss-and-go, with more than one student in many of them. If you multiply that out, and I know this sounds crazy, that's 27,000 separate student movements out of cars and onto the sidewalk over the year, all without incident or accident. So it's just great to see what we can accomplish when we work together, families, township, and school district. It's the sort of thing that makes me really proud to call West Orange home, and I hope to see more cooperative efforts like this in the future. And I thank you again.
Thank you, Ken Alper. Ms. Williams? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Good evening, Tammy Williams, 16 Hillside Avenue. Coming today to speak on behalf of OSPAC and our upcoming season, would like to share with everyone that we had an extremely successful Latin night. We had over 300 to 400 participants, a wonderful Latin band hosted by the Spanish Heritage Foundation, and we have our next event on July 22nd, which is our International Food Festival. So we have about six different international food vendors who will be there. Free admission. You will pay $5 to sample from any of the vendors of your choice. We'll also have some children's activities, as well as musical entertainment, and we look forward to seeing each of you guys there. So we hope for you to come out. We have our entire schedule online. It's on the township website. It's on the NJAI website as well, for the rest of our activities for the remainder of the summer, culminating with our Jazz Fest, which is gonna be on September 16th. Most of the activities at OSPAC are at free, no cost, and we hope that you continue to support OSPAC with your generous donations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else besides Mr. Pagliisi who would like to speak? Mr. Pagliisi, you're not raising your hand. The spokesman who does not have to raise his hand.
Hi, Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. I know last week, or last meeting, I spoke a lot about the summer activities. So the Wellness on the Waterfront, which begins after the Fourth of July and continues through the month of July, which is our. through the month of July, which is our celebration of Parks and Recreation Month. Those activities occur at the Clipper Pavilion, which is off of Cherry Lane where the paddleboating is located. Then we have Zoo V's at Turtleback Zoo, which is on the top floor of the parking deck. That happens every Wednesday night in July and August. Excuse me. And then every Wednesday and Thursday night in July and August, the zoo has extended hours until 8:00 PM. I placed before you a schedule for our summer concert series, and I left some out on the table. And also, all the information I'm talking about is also on the website, which is EssexCountyNJ.org. I just want to point out that two of the concerts this year, two of the 32 concerts are in West Orange. The Cameos will perform at Eagle Rock Reservation on August 18. And then on September 10 is the South Mountain Blues Festival, which each year continues to grow and grow. So, if you can attend any of these, that would be great. I know you guys have your fireworks events on July 4, but if you do have some time on Thursday, June 29, Friday, June 30, or Monday, July 3, and you like the pyrotechnics, we invite you to come out to Week Wake Park, Brookdale Park, and Branch Brook Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi.
No, I ask him a question.
Oh. How did you do that?
Huh?
How did you ask him the question?
No, I'll ask him a bit later.
Oh, okay. Would anyone, yes, Ms. Morelli?
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. I just want to add to the Relay for Life. Rodolfo Rodriguez, who's the deputy mayor, donated the food, so there was another community event where businesspeople and community residents, residents in the town. Tonight, I want to speak about the conditions at the Rent-a-House and my responsibilities and actions as a member of the board. I wasn't able to speak at the last meeting when all that discussion went on, and being a member, I'd like to have my little say here tonight. First, I'm an advocate for the tenants. As such, it's my responsibility to ensure their living conditions, safety, and quality of life are guaranteed. I've attempted to observe, respond, and act when I become aware that there may be problems. I have brought to the board all complaints or issues communicated to me by the tenants. I'm fully aware the township is not responsible for the facility. I've spoken on occasion to Mr. Sayers on the services the township must provide to the facility, for example, the health department. My first action after my appointment was to write a letter to the DCA, Department of Community Affairs Commissioner Richmond, to forward complaints to the, that the tenants had with the East Orange office, which is their branch office. This was after Leanne Zalino had left. She retired as a manager there. While she was there, there were no problems. The complaints were numerous and consistent. Mr. Richmond had the new office manager meet with me, and he committed to rectifying the problems I identified. Problems included, but were not limited to, the tenants' inability to have their calls returned or acted on. Very late recertification and rent rate adjustments, and many, many more I don't have time to mention. Conditions improved for a while, but the latest comments from the tenants are, and you heard with other comments were made here by the tenants themselves, they've just given up calling. It's not worth wasting the time. As for the windows, I took pictures in several apartments of leaks that were over electrical outlets and furniture near the windows that leaked, were water damaged. I showed them to the management company at one of the board meetings. There's a saga connected with the windows, which are now in the process of being replaced. Hopefully, it will resolve all the problems they've been having. I was instrumental in getting an emergency protocol being developed and implemented after some serious issues occurred after the management company's office hours, nights and weekends. The seriousness of the problem was very evident when the building had no water for almost an entire day, which was on a weekend. I brought that issue up to the management company, who were reluctant to take any action. Kevin Dillon, a board member, suggested the OEM, the Office of Emergency Management, be involved and be the first point of contact. He arranged to have that done. It proved to be very effective, especially last year when the building lost power during the heat wave. OEM is, was immediately on site as soon as they were called. PSENG were there shortly after OEM contacted them, and they took over. OEM stayed at the facility and provided the tenants with frequent updates and had plans in place to bring the seniors to the facility to sleep if the electricity wasn't repaired by nighttime. It wasn't safe to stay in the building, it was too hot. As it turned out, PSENG did get it repaired that evening. I feel I fulfilled my responsibility and commitments as a member of the board. My phone rings continually, constantly. The issues that are there now seem to be out of control. I don't know what else I could possibly do. The township's hands are tied, but something needs to be done. There's no way anybody should live in those conditions. And Mr. Guarino can attest to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I'm going to close public comment and ask my colleagues if anyone would like to respond to anything said during public comment.
You want to go first this time?
Okay.
Go first.
Well, I know Unico's not here, but Matt's still here from SERC. I just want to thank Unico for their, Ken talked about the Friends of Edison and the Edison Museum and the park that they established, helped establish last year, and they are so generous. I mean, $10,000 is a lot of money to contribute to any organization. Ken Broderick mentioned the Raised Garden at the Toby Cat Civic Center for children with disabilities and wheelchairs. That, again, was thousands of dollars a few years back. They're just so generous and thoughtful. So, and now with the radios, again, another outstanding contribution. Alex, Jessica, and Chris, they came for the relay. They're always welcome. I still think back, I was council president at the time when they first arrived, the committee at that time, and they just came to the lectern and said, "We want you to pitch a tent and walk all night." And we had no idea what they were talking about. You know, cancer doesn't take a rest, and that's the whole idea of the relay, that would just walk all night to support those with cancer and the survivors that walk as well. So, it's always a beautiful event there. It just seems to grow. Megan, thank you for your lovely words. It seems to be working. If you said you were a little shy talking to adults, you did an outstanding job this evening, so I agree with you. I think the program should continue. It sounds like everyone is really immersed in it and that it really has taken off. So, welcome to the council, and you did a nice, nice job. And Rosary, also for your advocacy for the seniors in, at the Rent-a-House. You know, we'll do what we can do. I know Jerry's on top of that with the pictures and everything that you've presented to the board. Ken, just to thank Ken Alper, thank you for the update at Gregory. It's always great to hear, you know, that plans are actually working, plans in place, planning department, plans in place that are actually working. So, thank you for giving us that update. And Tammy, we had a great summer, so we look forward to an International Food Festival. I don't know if you're still looking for vendors, if you need any. Okay, we could work on that through the chamber? Sure. Okay. So, thank you. Yep.
Counselor.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, Megan, thank you for being the true example of what a West Orange youth is in high school. So, you make our town great, and thank you, and keep up your efforts and teach the new classes coming in what they need to do. And, you know, my thanks to the West Orange High School, the faculty and staff, you know, Mr. Moore, Mrs. Zekala, and the Board of Education. But thank you. You should be very proud of yourselves. I'm sure Mrs. Morelli is too, so. Mr. Alper, thank you. Ken, thank you. But I was going to thank you and the Gregory School PTA for always being enthusiastic, for always being there and being proactive, not criticizing, but always working with all of us to make things safer for our students. So, thank you. And we'll always be there for the school system, no matter, you know, whatever we can do. And thank you for people like yourself. Susan, thank you for your update. We look forward to that and the Vietnam War Memorial Veterans. I know my brother, who's a Vietnam veteran, will be up here too, and it's going to be a hard thing for him because a lot of his, members of his troop were, are on that wall, so, but he'll be here. Tammy, thank you for your enthusiasm. Looking forward to the food and everything else. I love those food things. My doctor doesn't like me to have them, but I like to. Getting back to Ms. Morelli's comments, she's right about a lot of things. It's why I put together a picture package. I'm requesting a copy of the contract for management, for Marzulli and Rent-a-House to make sure that we get what we're actually paying for. Our residents shouldn't live with the rents that they pay, with the fees that they are charged. That's why we need to keep on top. It's sorry that you have to keep on top of people. It's a shame that people get paid, but we have to keep on it. But I took the pictures they sent to me. I put together a presentation. I'm meeting with the Marzulli group, and I'm planning on a walkthrough with them and to actually point out things, and I want answers. You know, and I want to look at their contract, you know, to see what has to be done. You know, is, you know, is their contract coming up for renewal? You know, is there somebody else out there that can do a better job? You know, you don't just pay rent and pay fees. You know, our seniors are people too, and they should also live in comfort and safety and cleanliness. We've gotten certain things done. I know Ms. Morelli did her things. I did mine with the mold in the rooms downstairs, a few other things, but we took pictures and the residents gave me pictures, which are important. One picture's worth a thousand words, so we're going to work on that. I spoke to our leader of our board and actually, and our next board meeting will be coming up soon, but I'm going to meet with Marzulli before our board meeting, and I want answers. So, and I thank the residents for coming. I wish they'd come more, even though we're not responsible for the building, but sometimes it takes you to tell us, and especially members like myself and Ms. Morelli who sit on the board, to make things happen. So, you know, we'll look into that. And like I said, contract is there. I got to look and see if there's renegotiation, if there are anything else, clauses that will help us enforce the issue. I mean, we shouldn't have to do this. You know, you're paid a fee, but sometimes you gotta, you gotta get nasty. But thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Anyone else like to respond?
Do you want to go first?
Counselor?
Yes, thank you. Question in regards to the Rent-a-House, Mr. Sayers? Or maybe Ms. Councilman Guarino? Question in regards to the Rent-a-House. It's like, I know it's always been Marzulli, my grandma, my husband's grandmother, Grandma Jenny, was in there years ago, and anytime there was an issue with her apartment, they always came. Is there a change in their manager? Are they, did they shortchange their staff? Or do we have any clue of why it's been so poor lately?
No, I'm going to get the answers. That's why I have the package put together for them. I'm going to meet with them and do a walkthrough, and I want them to answer. Why is the service level going down? And if there's things like the floors, the pictures, the carpeting and everything else which are dangerous, I want to know why they're not being maintained.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not just going to be a walkthrough. It's going to, it's a question and answer period, and they are, they are answerable to the board for the Rent-a-House, and that's what we're going to do.
Oh, I agree. I understand that you could do with the contract, because that's when, usually when you have issues with the vendor, that's when they pay attention. So, thank you for your due diligence, and Ms. Morelli, for yours, and hopefully, you know, that will get resolved sooner than later. Megan, thank you for coming down. I had a nice chat with, I keep calling Coach Zekala, Mr. Zekala, about the program, and, you know, as usual, our students, you and your colleagues, do a great, fellow students do a great job up at the high school. We're going to talk about, hopefully, maybe if you're interested, maybe having a few of you maybe get trained, if you're interested, but Mr. Zekala will reach out to you about that in regards to assisting with the survey, because it could be a great opportunity in September, October, of having one of your classes and helping in the Library and Media Center. What better place than to have a bunch of folks go on, go online and take the survey and for our students to help assist? So, we're going to try to get that together, and so we look forward to that. So, thank you for all you do, and I hope you have some time this summer, some, for you and your friends, to take advantage of that opportunity. Ken Alper, thank you for coming down tonight. Can you believe we're here from a year or so ago from all that occurred? Thank you and the PTA for not losing the faith. I didn't lose the faith back when we were having those community meetings, and not that I blame, could blame the residents for being a little apprehensive about the original plan that was shown to, to the neighborhood at that one meeting. But with everybody working together and knowing the staff at Gregory and how wonderful they are, and knowing they would be out there doing whatever they needed to do under Principal Michelle Thompson's guidance, that it would be, maybe not flawless at first, but eventually it became flawless. Just a quick update, I know school's out, but I know a tree there had, did not take one of the trees, and so that will be replaced by the contractor. Obviously, not over the summer because they don't take over the summer because of the heat. So, hopefully, in, in September, Mr. Lepore just gave me that update right before our meeting tonight. So, that will get done. And great job on your Strawberry Festival. I know. You, your PTA, you've been very busy raising money. As to, you know, thank you to all the community organizations represented here tonight and in the township this spring. They raised a lot of money. Unico always out there, one of the reasons why I wanted to join them. I wish I could give them more time because they are, as Councilwoman said, so generous. Relay for Life, you know, Tammy and Sue with the NJAI, with all your programming this summer. Look forward to that. And thank you all for doing what you do and raising the money that you raise that we're able to give these great opportunities to our residents. Thank you, Council President.
Counselor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Council President. On the senior issue, the property was built in the late '60s, Mr. Sayers, early '70s?
It's 50 years old.
So, it's getting up there. There's a lot of wear and tear that happened as a result over time. In the late '60s and early '70s, when these properties were being built through that Section 202 program, it was easy to manage because they were in good shape, they were structurally new, and over time, wear and tear tends to, you know, starts to sip in and create a lot of issues. In addition to that, you have the refinancing that just took place, which created some increases in rent for some of the families. So, overall, you have the issue of the wear and tear. You have certain residents may not be happy with the increase in rents, which may have affected community morale within the senior building. However, I believe that the management company needs to respond with some quality openness, good communication with the residents, let them know what's going on. What are the, what does the agenda look like as far as our capital improvements? You know, we know that the dollar can only be stretched so far, but at least if the clients are being, or the residents are being explained what's in store for the next 10 years, the next 15 years, you can start improving that community morale. But I think that the key lies with communication. So, if, in addition to talking to the, the property managers or the contractors, just make sure that, during those conversations, just stress that you really need to sit down with the residents and have quarterly meetings, at least, just so that there is a certain level of communication. Not going to make everybody happy, but at least, you know, the information's out there on what's going on. So, I do commend Ms. Morelli, and thank you for getting up there and for your advocacy, not only on that, but some of the other senior issues. But, but yeah, communication needs to improve. And again, I'll stress that capital improvement plan, just start showing seniors that, and I know that, you know, while the funds may not be in the capital reserves right now, wear and tear has taken its toll, but we'll be addressing these issues in time. You need to prioritize, if there's a mold issue, that's number one, that's a health and safety issue, there's an elevator issue. So, think about prioritizing some of those capital items. So, those are my recommendations as far as that's concerned. I do want to thank all the speakers for coming up here. I don't know if some, some of you were here earlier today during the agenda, during our conference meeting, we had the Unico, West Orange, Orange, chapter of Unico make a donation to the SERC team, the Community Emergency Response Team. They donated some communication radios, and it was nice to hear Captain Jassen. communication radios, and it was nice to hear Captain Jassen mention that he's happy to see that a lot of organizations are not buying in, that they're, they're participating in the spirit of, of community action and activism, community service, so that's the beautiful thing, Megan, about this community, and I hope that as you move forward in life, you come back and you just, you make this your place of residency as well, after you complete your studies, because this community thrives, and it, it is the special place that it is, because of people like you, you know, and you're starting early, and I commend you for that. Thank you very much. And lastly, it's a good thing that we have these radios, 'cause we have the 4th of July weekend coming up, the Vietnam Memorial Wall, and SERC is out there, you know, during the fireworks night, they're out there during the, during the, the street fair, so they do a lot of work. Thank you guys, I see Matt in the back, he's still here. Ken, thank you for your advocacy at Gregory School, so overall, you know, it's, it's, it's so hard to be negative when you live in such a positive environment. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, a lot of great comments during public comment, another good public comment period, excuse me, but I, I do wanna focus on the issues that have been raised about the Rent a House, because it sounds like it's a continuing issue, or even a problem, and I wanna say thank you to Councilman Garino for stepping in and stepping up, and I also wanna say thank you to Ms. Morelli, and also I believe, was it Ms. Smith who came at the last council meeting to, to speak?
Yeah, she's here.
Yeah, yes.
She's Jonesy.
Thank you, too. I just had a thought, as Councilman Garino was talking about meeting with the management firm, I, I wonder if because Ms. Morelli and Ms. Smith both have unique perspectives, one is a tenant, the other one apparently has a lot of relationships over there, that maybe the three of you, along with Councilman Garino, work together closely to try to identify all these issues, and provide additional background, either for the walkthrough or just in general, maybe putting together a list of the issues that need to be addressed in writing, so that there won't be, as Councilman Garino was saying about, there seems to be some communications issues, that there will be no lack of communication as to what the exact problems are, and how they're going to be addressed. And I'd like Councilman Garino to keep pushing on this, and giving us regular inputs, 'cause there's, there's a lot of people over there, we're going into the summer, the summer period, and I'd like that to go as well as, as possible.
Absolutely, Council President.
So please, you guys, please work together and get these fixed, and hopefully bring us back some good, some good, some good news. So thank you. Any other comments, my colleagues? We'll move on. Madam Clerk?
Okay, review of the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and ABC Board Executive Session of June 13th, 2017.
Consent.
Consent. Report of Township Officers, none, reading of petitions and communications and bids, none, bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Questions?
I have a question, Council President. I do have a question. Well, the question on, do we pull A, is that related to the executive session? Yeah. Do we have to pull? Obviously, right. You don't have to pull it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That was all I have.
So, a late addition to our agenda, actually, just, just, Mr. Kizer, I'll let you speak in just a second. A late addition to our agenda was a request to have an executive session to discuss Resolution 143-17, request to, approval to hire an attorney to conduct an independent investigation. Mr. Kizer, did you wanna?
Yeah, I just wanna make clear, oh, 157-17 is the resolution authorizing the executive session. The, the resolution itself was corrected to indicate that this is a matter of potential litigation, the, the agenda was not corrected, it indicates it's a matter of personnel, and I would like to have that corrected after the fact, so that it's clear that this is a matter of anticipated litigation, and not a matter of personnel. And the executive session will be short, so.
I'll make that amendment.
Thank you. Does the council need to do anything else on that issue of clarification of the?
No.
I would like to pull Agenda Item H, Resolution 15017, it's the resolution authorizing an award of contract for tree removal services. I don't have any other resolutions to pull, does anybody have any?
I have questions on D.
Yes, please, please go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just in regards to, you know, they want an extension, what kinda issues are they having?
Colonial Woods.
Colonial Woods development, Mr. Sayers?
Which one you talking about?
Colonial Woods.
14617.
14617.
Oh, the Colonial Woods? That's a piece of property that they divided into, just divided, they, there's one home that had been built up there already, the sec, I think there's a second lot that's being sold, and they're just asking for an extension for the.
They're just not done?
Does not have to go back accordingly.
Doesn't, okay.
If I could just follow up on that, I, I looked at some of the lots that were listed in the proposed contract, and one of them, I think is not, should not be there, it's a, it's property that's now, it appears to have been sold, it is now owned by someone else, but it's cited in the contract itself, and I think Mr. Moon, you know, emailed right before the meeting to, to say that he, you know, he just assumed that they were like, that they, the properties that were listed in the contract were, the contract extension were all still owned, but I know that, that piece of property is not, so does that in any way jeopardize the, I can see Mr. Kizer shaking his head, it doesn't matter that.
No, they can amend the.
Okay. Any other questions on, on 146? Councilwoman, did you have any questions on the other?
On H? I think that was pulled.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that, so we can talk about it then.
And, question, but just a comment on M, I just wanna thank the school board, particularly board member Laura Lab for, you know, working with Mr., with, I wanna call him a sibling man, our freeholder Lenny Luciano, and making that arrangement that they'll assist in payment for the light on Pleasant Valley Way, so, just wanted to thank them.
And just to clarify, that's a resolution that talks about the town.
Alyssa Drive.
The town, Alyssa Drive's gonna put in a traffic signal, it's gonna cost about $350,000, and the school district and the town are going to share the cost, one-third each, and then the additional one-third handled by the county.
And then the county will maintain the.
And the county's gonna maintain it.
Yep.
That was years in the making, though, just to clarify, I mean, that was, you know, go to the county meeting, but that was years in the making, between Pleasant Valley Civic Association, pedestrian safety.
Oh, no, a lot of.
A lot of people getting involved over the years, for that to happen.
But thank to our colleagues, because they don't have to pay for the light, and they volunteer, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the consent?
If I could, I, I'm sorry, I had a, a few questions of my own, outside of the one I'm gonna pull. On, on Resolution 147, which I think is the council's approval of the annual audit and the corrective action, I have to say, I think this is, in the seven years I've been here, this has been the least amount of corrections that, that have been required, so I just wanna say, nice job, guys, not just Mr. Gross, but everybody in his department, and probably the entire administration, so I think that's good. I do wanna get, if I can, the, the audit in electronic form, and get it up on the, on the town website, it's rather voluminous, and perhaps somebody could tell the auditor that this is 2017, and we really need those electronic versions.
Well, they give it to us every year.
Okay.
As I, as I mentioned in the email, we, we've requested, we have, have not sent it yet, we wouldn't, probably would not have put it up before you accepted it anyway, under the circumstance.
Okay, so.
We get, they're all, all previous years are all up.
Right, any ETA on, on this one?
On, ask for it, I mean, it's a matter of how long it takes them to put it together.
Well, I have to say that I'm very proud to have found a mistake in the audit that you confirmed, it's not major or anything, but I'm just wondering, it had to do with, the auditor seemed to think that we didn't have a certified purchasing agent, and of course we do, and Ms. DeSantis has been certified for multiple years. Did you find any other issues, any other factual issues with the, with the audit?
Um, no. I mean, we, we always have differences of perception sometimes, but, no, nothing that, and, and as you mentioned, this is a very, very clean audit, so, very pleased with the way the departments have responded, and you're still, just like anything else, we still have some work to do in certain areas, but I, I always say it's really good when, when they get, when the complaints we do get from the auditor get down to the level that we're at now, which means they're really digging, so, that's really a good sign.
The, the one area that I had a little bit of concern with was just some of the comments that were made about the municipal court, I know we've had a lot of turnover there, in terms of the judges, and also the personnel there.
Back up here.
Okay, 'cause I.
Yeah, I'd say, number one, the comments that you see there are, are pretty common comments that you see in most municipalities. One of the issues, we, we haven't been able to get a hold of some of them because of the changeover in personnel, but I think that's, exit, I think that's resolved.
And it mostly seemed, appeared to have to do with the, the tickets, the traffic tickets, whether they were being properly processed?
Yeah, you see that everywhere, that, that, you get that comment just about every place.
Okay, this is the first time I've seen it coming from us, 'cause, 'cause I know when, when Judge Starrett was there, that, that place ran like a Swiss clock, and I know there's been a lot of turnover since then. Just, just quick, quickly, you, you said that the, the finance office will be assisting the court administrator, monitoring the efforts to improve, how, how is that going to?
We're gonna, we're, as you, as I, as you're aware, we, we do not have jurisdiction over the court.
We pay for it, we just.
And we pay for it, but we don't have, so, it is not something that I oversee, it's the only department that I do not oversee financially. Having said that, we have a very good relationship, and we'll, we'll be working together, making sure that things are, are getting resolved.
Any other questions, yes, Councilwoman?
Yeah, in regards to audit, just, you know, thank you, Mr. Gross, the software packages you've been presenting to us, you know, for efficiency, have been proven efficient, so, and congratulations to the staff for surviving all the training, and I know it's not easy to, you know, to have to, you know, change the way you're doing things for years, and to, you know, work out the tweaks in the systems, but definitely proven, you know, with the audit, proof is in the pudding, so, great job.
Thank you.
Great job, John.
I'll pass it along.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to express my gratitude, Council President, for your work, I'm sure that BA was concerned.
What about me? I mean, what do you think? Probably hit.
I was gonna say, I'm sure.
It's pretty good up to nine. If it gets up to nine, it's pretty good.
I'm sure the business industry that was concerned with Mr. Coleman was, you know, retired, and glad that he was part of the team, and helping us out through the years, and not only carry on the requirements, but be proactive in making sure that we implement the latest that's out there, as far as.
Look, I'm only joking, I, I said when he came here, we were in the 19th century, not even the 20th century, we were doing everything by hand, and I have to say, since he's been here, we are now moving into the 21st century electronically, and it's really helped us in a lot of different ways.
Did you get rid of the abacus?
What's that?
Did you get rid of the abacus?
No, that's the third check. That's the third check. Always gotta have three, gotta tie three times, so.
But he really has put some, implemented some systems that really helped us a lot, and, you know, now we're doing our new payroll system, which is the last piece of it, which is something we've been trying to do for a long time, and it's really started to work pretty well.
And change isn't easy, so.
No, you know, a lot of the employees are upset, but it's, in the end, I keep telling them, it's gonna be better for you, it's gonna be a lot easier, and a lot of them are starting to see that now, so it's, it's working pretty well.
Thank you, Council President. I guess basically the issue is that they can't get checks written to them now, their paychecks can't be in paper, they've gotta take it either in a, either in a cash card or debit card, or.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Or an ACH into their checking account.
I think they're more upset with how to use the systems than their paycheck, to be quite honest with you. It's really, you know, a lot of, a lot of them have pushed back on it, but it's, it's working.
I mean, it's a total change in the way we do business, so.
We did everything by hand, everything.
Little antequated.
Yes, little bit.
And of course, if you come from the private sector, that's not a surprise, it's a surprise that we haven't moved there before.
Oh, definitely.
But, and it's not a criticism, 'cause been a great, great progress in the last two or four years.
It's been working very well.
But I can't remember the last time I got a paycheck, you know, that wasn't electronic ACH.
However, I do have to remind you all to go online.
Yeah.
Sign in.
Yeah, we got our letters.
To make sure that you will then be able to see your stuff through your next paycheck.
I did it over.
I've tried, I didn't, I couldn't get in, so, I couldn't.
Well, maybe that's why the employees are upset, 'cause they can't get in.
It's a little confusing.
It takes you to the site, but then it says everything's invalid, so, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Just a procedural question, the, the new Resolution 15717 to authorize the executive session, I don't know whether that impacts whether we, as a council, are considering not approving or voting against 14317, which is actually authorizing the investigator, so, if, if we're not considering voting against it, and I'm certainly not, but if we're not, then we, we can go ahead and vote on the consent agenda, if we're gonna.
You can even on a consent agenda if you choose to.
Yeah.
And still go into executive session.
Yeah.
Those are the executive session, absolutely.
So I just wanted to raise that, before we take a vote.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So we wanna just leave it?
Leave it on.
Leave it on, okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, what are we leaving on?
A.
I'm sorry, I just wanted.
So you're just taking off H?
So H, okay, okay, okay. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some, second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Okay. So, Resolution H is 150-17, Resolution authorizing an award of contract for tree removal services with Down Tree Service, Inc., in the amounts indicated on the resolution, Council President Kokovia.
Yeah, I pulled this because I just see a, a potential for significant increased costs under this proposed contract award, and got some numbers late today, this is, this is a resolution having to do with tree services that the town does to cut down trees in the township, that are, that are our responsibility, and last year we spent $113,000 and change under this contract, and even though the last contract was bid, I guess in early 2016, or the contract was 2016, and could have been extended, I think two years, it wasn't extended, it went out for bid again, and the bid came back, and I see the potential for significantly increased costs under this contract, particularly if we have the same level of service that we did last year, and I was just trying to get a better feel for why we did it the way we did it, and whether the administration has any concern about the increased costs.
One of the things, from my understanding from my, the township engineer, was that the, in, within the bid are increased levels of, of the bids, in terms of the sizes, that they'll be cutting down, and he feels that because of that nature, we'll be able to tweak it better and, and bring in some savings, this is why he wanted to go out, 'cause basically we were lumping all the different sizes into five categories, I think it's now into nine, so he thinks by doing that, that we'll, we'll be in a position to save money.
Was there any?
It is much cheaper for subcontractors out than to do it on our own.
Oh, right, no question about that, no question about that, no question about that.
And, and what John is saying is true, Lenny said that they expanded it from five sections to nine sections, which he believes may even help us, 'cause what happens is, is when you go out there and you have a tree that, you know, the diameter is maybe two feet, rather. that, you know, the diameter is maybe two feet rather than six feet, there's a big difference on how you're taking that tree down and what equipment you're going to need to bring in to do that. So, Lenny wanted to expand the way that we could deal with the contractor, which, that's why he feels this is something we should support.
So, just, was there any particular consideration given to why we would go out again in a new bid when we had it still? We could have asked for a couple of more years on the old contract?
Well, the old, the old contract, again, had the limitation of the five different sizes. Lenny just thinks that that's a, that's a better way for us to move, and that's why he decided to do it.
Okay.
You know, again, it is a bid, you know, the pricing, it's bid pricing, so it's a competitive atmosphere, and, you know, this is from a, the economics of it makes sense in the sense, you know, you don't want to, the more refined you can get your pricing, the more you can target, you know, what you're doing and get the price exactly for it. So, I think it just makes sense.
So, I was just going to say, maybe you explain to me where I'm off then, because the sizes were increased from five categories to nine categories. In the five categories that stayed the same, the price stayed the same in one of them, went down slightly in another one, and went up significantly in the other three. One of them went up $200, another one went up $500, and the largest one went up $175. So, then, in the, in the four categories that were added for the larger trees that were all new, under the previous contract, the, the price for 37 inches on up was $1,575, $1,575. In this new contract, that price goes up $175, and then, in the, in the larger sizes, it goes up even more, 21, 2150, 2450, 2750, and 3150 for 53, 53 inches across and above, whereas it seemed to me, under the previous contract, all of those would have been covered by the price of 37 inches or more, that was $1,575. So, if we start doing these bigger trees, under the old contract, we wouldn't have paid any more for the larger trees. Now, we're going to be paying significantly more for the larger trees.
Yeah, I didn't do the analysis that Lenny did. I mean, you know, as far as looking at the actual breakdown of the trees, et cetera, so I can't, I can't address that specifically as to what he felt the mix was going to be. But I, you know, based on the information that he gave us today, he feels that this mix is better. I really can't go much further than that.
Yeah, I just don't see how that's better, but okay.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, Mr. Sayers, just the scope of our total shade tree department, just...
Whether the air conditioning...
No, no. Thank you. Oh, now you can hear me. With the scope and size of our shade tree division, you know, has it in the last few years gotten smaller? And the level, and the, the skill level of our shade tree personnel, has it required us to go more to the outside?
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know if it has required us to go to the outside, but it's definitely much cheaper to subcontract it out than to hire more people to do the work and more equip, and then we'd have to bring in all the equipment that will... I mean, there's some, there's trees that get taken down in neighborhoods, you need a crane to hold the tree so it doesn't hit the house or fall on the street or whatever. So, when you're using a company, they have all that equipment. Therefore, we would have to buy that equipment.
So, we don't, we don't have a lot of this equipment?
No.
Okay. And I, like I said, I don't see, I'd go out and hire people. I'm just saying is, but I noticed that, you know, we did have a good-sized shade tree, you know, unit, and now it seems like...
Oh, it's much less than it ever was.
Okay. Okay. And as the level, I mean, the incidences of the trees, I know, has been increasing where, between the weather and increased rainfall and, you know, and erosion, so we're having more and more issues with replacing trees and taking trees down.
Right. I mean, if the tree's ours, we have to remove it. If it's the homeowner's, the homeowner has to remove it.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman?
I get, you know, I don't want to quote Mr. Lepore, because I briefly spoke with him this afternoon, but I guess doing it this way, and from what Mr. Gross is saying, from what I remember our conversation, because we went on to other items, basically is, now with this package, you know, if something does come up, then you get that quote then. Here, now, we have the definitive pricing of those situations, so in the long run, as Mr. Gross was saying, it's going to be a savings for us. He's still a little bitter. But maybe, you know, if you're not comfortable to talk with him tomorrow.
Perhaps that's true. I'm just looking at the contract that this one is proposed to replace, and it just says 37 inches plus, $1,575, so...
But I don't think they stay true to that, from what he, you know, I don't think they're just, yeah, because the plus is, they give him a number, and I guess those numbers, those random situation have been very costly. We're here now, he has, you know, he has them in a definitive amount, so he feels...
Plus, they were the lowest bidder out of other tree companies. So, by not even supporting it, not doing it, you're going to put it out again, and you're going to get somebody else who's a higher bidder, which just doesn't make any sense. The numbers may be up a little bit, but based on the way it's laid out, according to what the discussions I had with Lenny, he feels it's going to be better for us having nine than five. Because there's certain, we, there's a certain amount of sized trees that are normal that we deal with, and there's certain sizes that...
Yeah, odd situations.
And he feels that by expanding it to the nine, that we're going to eliminate some of the stuff that we were doing before, based on the size of the trees.
And again, if his analysis shows, for instance, in the area where the sizes where it actually went down is a major area for us, there may be enough savings in there, and I suspect there are, that's what he's projecting again. I didn't do it, but he's projecting that the savings there would be more than what we would risk on the top end.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's only, there's only one, one category that went down, it went from 375 for 16-inch to 23-inch tree to 325, so it's going to save us $50, I suppose, if we did, if we did 1,000 trees.
That's 80% of our trees. You know what I mean? If 80% of our trees are down $50, those others being up are not going to, you know, going to overcome that. So, that's, again, that, that, that comes down to, you know, what is, what is our inventory, if you will.
Right. If that's the case. And I had, I had asked, as you know, I had asked for that specific breakdown so I could see what kind of trees we were doing and how that might impact this one, and it wasn't available. So, I'm glad Councilwoman had a conversation, but I wish Mr. Lepore was here, but I think he's, he's out. He's, I'll be... Okay. Is there...
He sounded confident. Again, I'm not going to quote our conversation, because I was driving home in traffic, but he sounded confident he was going to save money with this new contract.
I understand his logic, because I like the idea of going in knowing how much it's going to cost, as opposed to, it sounds like it could be a random amount if it's just lumped in with the size. So, this way, you know what the bill will be, as opposed to having a category that goes from eight to...
Well, hopefully, he gets the bids before he starts the work. I can't imagine Mr. Lepore wouldn't do that.
Now we know.
He's very thorough.
He's very thorough.
No, it just, I, I am, I just feel like I have a lack of information here, and so I just wanted to flag it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, I agree.
Is there any other comments? Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 150-17?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kropovia?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2514-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-26.1, Bus Stops and Subsection 7-30, Mid-Block Crosswalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirilla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kropovia?
Yes. State law requires, we're going to have a public hearing. State law requires us to have a public hearing on all ordinances on second reading. If anyone would like to comment, make, make comment during the public hearing, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and come up and speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance 2514-17? Please raise your hand. In case you didn't hear me, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I will close the public hearing. Madam Clerk? Is there any discussion on this?
She asked.
I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
That's okay. I wish Lenny was here on this particular one, because I, as much as I do want to see this crosswalk there, because it is an unsafe condition, I don't know that the issues we raised at our last meeting have been resolved. There are still cars parked on the Edison Middle School side, and if someone's coming out from Edison or Bethany Church, which is where the pedestrian walkway is supposed to be, you're stepping out in front of a parked car. So, I think Michelle has an update for me.
So, those other items, I went on to speak with Mr. Lepore, was, was about this crosswalk, because, again, we, you know, we're concerned about all of those, you know, folks parking, and he went out to the site, and he said he hasn't figured out what yet he wants to do, because he's still observing it, and, you know, this still has to go to the county. So, you know, he suggested that we're, you know, he's going to, he's going to do something. He just hasn't figured it out yet, and he wants to talk to them at the county for some suggestion. So, once we pass this, that's, you know, something will, you know, something will be added. He will add on some kind of parking restriction.
Okay.
You know, whether, because, you know, I'm concerned, like I said in the morning, you know, school buses park in front of Dunkin' Donuts, they'll run in for their coffee, and I've called on them numerous times with their bus number, but it's, it's a legal place for them to pull up to, but if there's a crosswalk there. His major concern, he said, also is not so much, you know, of course, with folk, with especially children crossing and the view, as we mentioned, but also when you're pulling out of the driveway there, and if somebody's parked, your visual view of pulling out from their driveway. So, he not quite sure yet what he will recommend for us to pass, but he, there will be a recommendation.
So, if we approve it, can it be with conditions that, I don't know?
I'd feel comfortable.
He's, I can, I can almost certain, with a great amount of certainty, know exactly what Mr. Casey will tell us. We need to either vote it up or vote down. But anyway, let's continue our discussion.
That was my update.
And my update with Mr. Lepore, he's working with the traffic engineers to get a good concept of the scope, because remember, we're also incorporating the new paint striping and the road diet into the whole plan, so he wants to take a look at that, too, to make sure it all works cohesively, and not just putting something there that's not going to work and that will be more dangerous than what we're trying to cover.
Yeah. I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, I'm...
I'm not comfortable. I mean, as much as I want to see this happen, I want to see all that happen first, so that you can see one plan.
I agree.
I'm the same way. I think it is important to fix the problem, now that it's been raised, and I wasn't really aware of it before.
Yeah, there's not, Roger, it's out right now.
That's true.
So, if we want to, we can just vote it down and restart the, restart the process, if that's what we want to do.
I think it's the right thing to do.
Just postpone it.
And see if we can... Put it off, that's all.
See if we can get on Mr. Lepore's calendar to actually come and speak with us on this.
Yeah, I guess he's going to need time, from what Councilman Garino also said, you know, because he's got to investigate it further, so I'm, I'm fine as well with just passing on this for today, but, you know, have it reintroduced. I'm in a lot of trouble speaking tonight. I sent a great deal of traffic all day, and my head is just spinning tonight, so, but anyway, I'm comfortable with that suggestion.
Do we want to pass it, or do we want to vote it down?
Can we just postpone it?
Yeah.
Vote it down.
Okay, yes, I make a motion to take a...
No, we'll, I'll do it the regular way, and then you'll vote.
Yeah, we want to make a motion.
Oh, you're going to do the, oh, all right. Are we ready to do that?
Before we do that, is anybody else finished with discussion?
All I'm saying is, but we need to make this as time as of the essence, though, because we don't want to keep holding off, so Mr. Lepore's going to have to jump on this, and we're going to have to jump on it, because we, the county has to get involved to approve this, and this way, we can try to get it done before school opens, but that's the only thing I want to say.
And plus, we're only having one...
Two more meetings.
Yeah, one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
This will not be done before school's open this year.
July 11th and August 15th.
It will not be done.
It wouldn't have been done anyway, correct?
Well, if we're not, if I had passed it, if there's a possibility...
Because it has to go to the county, correct? The mid-block. But Susan, I understand what you're saying, too.
Just one more time. No, go ahead.
No, no. I understand what Councilwoman McCartney is saying, and was, is that, just to pass it, to pass it, it's not, because if it's not going to suit the needs, what we're really trying to do, it's just, it's not right. So, we're just like, we should vote it down, give it back to Mr. Lepore, and he's just going to have to pull it all together. So, it's a good document, and with a good basis to it, Council President, so that's what I see.
Council?
So, with that in mind, so, I guess, Mr. Sayers, if we were to pass it, because the change wouldn't be within this ordinance, it would be an additional ordinance that would need to be, to be introduced for the parking situation, correct?
To restrict parking.
To restrict parking, yeah, I'm sorry, to restrict parking. So, he doesn't have to implement the...
Is that, is that the issue in nutshell, that...
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
There's additional parking regulations that are required if you're going to do what this...
Yes.
Well, you know, if you...
I mean, look, no ordinances are written in stone. I mean, you can always undo what was done, change what was done by a subsequent ordinance, so I'm not sure I understand the issue or problem here. I haven't talked to Lenny about it, and I'm not familiar with the situation, but, and in fact, if you pass this ordinance and Lenny decided he didn't, he thought it would be better not to implement it, you could come back and you could, again, redo it, basically. So, I'm not sure I understand the detail of what it is that you're concerned about.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'll tell you. The detail is that we're proposing a crosswalk in front of Edison Middle School to Dunkin' Donuts, because that's what kids do anyway, a beacon, flashing lights there, but there are cars parked along Main Street, so kids will, unless we restrict parking, which Lenny's proposing, kids will be stepping out in front of these parked cars.
So, the parking could be restricted by a future ordinance, as opposed to this one, if you want to proceed in that fashion.
And again, Lenny's going to be the one, I think, implementing this. He's got to go through the county, if I understand correctly, so I don't know how long all that's going to take from a practical standpoint, but you could do it in stages.
But you certainly would. Let's assume this could go lightning fast and get done by the beginning of school year. You could also then pass, introduce in July and adopt in August, regulations on the parking that would also start at the beginning of the school year.
Good point.
You have, you can...
We still have time to do that.
You still have time to do that, but if you, but if you, and I'm not saying that this will happen by then, but if you, if you turn it down tonight, it definitely will not. There's just no way it can possibly...
But just to be clear, you're not, your intention is not to move the crosswalk that's been proposed?
No, 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 oh, there's no chance.
I'm just, just look at the crosswalk.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we're...
So we want this to happen, but we wanna see a bigger plan.
Just one more time, please.
We want this to happen, but we want to see a comprehensive plan. That includes the parking or restrict the parking.
That's true.
That's what I said, if it could be a condition on the ordinance, that that has to follow. We know it has to follow.
Well, adopting the ordinance gives the authority to move forward. Implementation can be a time, you know, 'cause that's a timing issue.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
So going back to my conversation with Mr., today's conversation with Mr. Lepore, again, you know, that's why I wanted to clarify with administration. I guess he needs us to pass the crosswalk, and he's going to work on the additional ordinance he'll want us to, you know, that he'll recommend to us.
I guess that makes sense, because this does have to go to the county.
Yeah.
Right, this all has to be approved by then.
Right, they know what's coming.
And only parking on one side of Main Street.
And I...
That's a good point.
Right.
That's a good point.
It's only on one side.
I guess the recommend, I guess, 'cause he wants to hear the county's recommendation as well, 'cause it's a county road, of what they may recommend, so he can incorporate it all together to bring to us. So when you hear it that way, I guess we should pass this, if that's what we want. And then he won't, you know, he won't implement it until the other ordinances that we would need to pass are in place.
Councilman?
Yeah, that's why, good, thank you, Council President. That's why he was saying he needed to talk to the traffic engineers too, as he puts this in place, what changes, you know, we made, and so, the point is that, yes, we could pass this, moves it along, moves the whole idea of putting it in place, and then additional ordinances to restrict the parking, and, you know, make it, so this way we don't hold up the process. But I understood where Councilwoman McCartney was coming from too, 'cause you don't wanna pass something that's not really gonna fit. But if this just moves the process along, so we get the approval from the county, and then we build everything else into it. So hopefully during the school year, it's in place.
So two questions, one is sort of logistical. Is this going to require the township to hire a contractor to do this work? Because if it is, it's gonna take us forever to get a contractor.
I'm not so sure how he planned on getting the work done, whether it's gonna be us, the county, or whoever. To be quite honest with you, I don't know the answer to that question. But obviously, somebody's gonna have to get people together to do the work.
Yeah, and a lot of that parking, as probably you know, a lot of the parking that's on the east side of Main Street is from the auto body shop.
Oh, yeah.
He uses that a lot. Yeah, it's gonna be an issue.
But, excuse me, but the other issue is the, you know, where they stop in front of, you know, Dunkin' Donuts as well. I mean, that, for the larger vehicles, that's an issue. And I had even mentioned that, if you don't wanna hurt Dunkin' Donuts' business with restricting too much parking in front of their business, you know, can you put up a restriction for buses or trucks, et cetera, but then they may, you know? So that, these are all items that he is going to look at and recommend to us. So, but he wasn't ready to recommend anything tonight.
You couldn't do it, and if this hasn't been designed, you couldn't do the parking regulations anyway, until they actually designed it.
Exactly.
So they really probably have to be separate actions.
So by passing this, we're just...
You didn't know where to say, start, start the parking, it's not the parking.
Yeah, I think I'm more comfortable now with starting the process. I really, I really feel that if he knows we're not comfortable with moving forward with his recommendations, we could all, like you said, we could always undo it. So I'm gonna...
If we decide to move ahead, we should ask Mr. Lepore out on a date for July, what is it, 13th?
11.
11.
Oh, yeah, I'll invite him to Glenmont, here we go.
July 11th meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what's our feeling?
I'm, I'm good with that, yeah, I feel this is a step process, I'm good with moving forward.
I think just, just starts the process.
Right.
So we still know what we're looking for.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Ordinance 2514...
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes, motion passes.
Ordinance 2515-17, an ordinance creating a reclassification in salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo? Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes. Under state law, we have public hearings for all ordinances at second reading. If you would like to speak at our public hearing, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. Please raise your hand, if you'd like to speak at the public hearing. Seeing no hands, I close public hearing. Any of my colleagues like to discuss? Mr. Gross, can you give us a elevator pitch on the changes here?
Uh, this basically creates a new non-competitive position to replace a retirement position that we have. Allows us to bring someone in, instead of having to go through and use the formal service process to actually search for the right person for the right job.
Sounds like it's gonna speed up the process.
Sounds like it.
Thank you.
That's the plan.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2515-17?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes, motion passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on first reading, 2516-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township for Handicapped Spaces. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes, motion carries. Do any of my colleagues wish to have a discussion on this ordinance at this time?
Two addresses were there?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Do we have any pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
No, I don't remember any loose ends from last time.
Just procedurally, what would you like to do? Would you like to go into executive session now, or would you like to address the ABC issues? And then go into, come back into our council meeting and then go into executive session? Anybody have any...
Yeah. Executive session.
Like do the executive session now?
Sure.
Is there anybody here for any of the ABC matters? Doesn't look like it, but just wanna be sure, okay. So let's do the executive session now? We are back from our executive session, can't really discuss anything. That's why we went into executive session. I think we are finished with our council meeting. I think, Madam Clerk, don't we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn to the ABC.
I make a motion, re-adjourn from the town council and enter into the ABC.
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, West Orange. We will be back at our next council meeting on July 11th, I've been corrected. And as per our ordinance, we will have one council meeting in July, one council meeting in August, and then in September, we'll go back to twice a month. So at this point, have a happy Fourth of July weekend, happy safe, and we will see you again in a few weeks.